Good morning. I wish to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, August the 9th. I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones and I are present here in the Nat U Hill Room. We have two members present, so that is a quorum. We'll start with our public statement.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. Well, now move on to department updates. I believe we'll start with Ms. Kelly. Good morning.
Good morning. Just a few updates this morning. So recently, the CDC approved a new vaccine for infants who are at increased risk of illness due to RSV. RSV vaccines for adults 60 and older are also approved. Individuals should speak with their provider to determine their individual needs. We are currently expecting those vaccines to be available in the fall. In addition, the Indiana Department of Health will begin shipping flu vaccines sometime in early September. We don't have an exact date at this time. And the Public Health Clinic located on Miller Drive is hosting a back-to-school vaccine clinic on Saturday, August 12th, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m.
So this Saturday?
This Saturday. Yes.
Any idea where, well, when the RSV vaccines will be available?
In the fall, so September we're looking at, around that, yeah. So around the same time that we're expecting the flu.
RSV, I know from family, can be very, very difficult. You're stuck with it for weeks oftentimes, so.
Definitely.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. We'll see you in a little bit.
Thanks.
Anyone else have department update for us? We have our surveyor here and our GIS coordinator. Good morning.
Good morning, and very happy to be here. I was going to give a very brief update and then let our GIS coordinator, Dr. John Baton, demo a county resource interactive map that was put together. We showcased it yesterday at the council meeting, and Commissioner Giffens asked us to come and show it today, which we were already kind of talking about doing that. So I think getting more attention to this is just in our advantage. So quickly, update from the surveyor's office. I'm going to kind of focus more on the GIS division aspect. In May, from the support from the county council, we created a GIS technician position, which we'll be bringing onboard in relatively the next few weeks. So that's going to be very exciting. Also, with the support from the county commissioners, we, and support from our TSD, Greg Cron, TSD Director, we got expansion of our ELA, which is basically allowing more licenses to provide more of these types of tools, to see more of these types of web maps that John's going to demo. So I won't take any more time, and we'll get to why we're here. Let me just go ahead and share the screen. Hi, everybody. This is a web app that we have developed. This was an idea from Councilmember Cheryl Munson to develop a web app that highlighted community resources across Monroe County. And so what this web app does is tries to map. It has 60 locations right now. This is an ongoing app that will be built as more resources come in, and it's a collaborative app that I hope other departments in the county also feel empowered to contribute to. This is just the basic splash screen, kind of giving information about what this web app actually does and how it works. And I'll just give you kind of a brief overview of it. You do see here there's a link. What I'm going to do is just right-click on this and open this in a new tab. That's a survey for individuals to enter, or actually to send the GIS division data of resources that are not here, so we can actually crowdsource resources and then vet those resources to make sure they actually are resources. I'm just going to hit OK here. This is an interactive map. It does work on phones as well. I tested it on my rinky-dinky iPhone today, and it worked OK. And so what you can do here is see on the far right, we have the legend, and you can see the different types of resources that are mapped out here. So pantries, places that provide hot meals, places with financial assistance, medical health benefits, legal or judicial shelters, et cetera. You can see all of these are linked on the map here. If I zoom in, you'll start seeing bus stops as well. I did not zoom in very good there. Here we go. We'll zoom in actually on a bus route. This is a bus route. Here are the bus stops. People can click on the bus stop, and it's actually going to, there's a link here to bring you to the City of Bloomington's double map, which is giving individuals an opportunity to see kind of where these buses are in real time. I'm just going to close out of that, go back here. A couple of cool features on this map. You can filter the resource type by its type. And so if I just wanted to find all of the medical, health, or recovery services, by filtering that, it's going to zoom in to those resources. And vice versa, you can do that with other things here as well. So legal, judicial, it will zoom to all of those. Now, a lot of people are going to be utilizing this on their phone, and what we can do here is utilize the Resources Near Me widget. And if people click that and enable the locational services, what that's going to do is bring you a one-mile buffer of where you are. And then it lists the, for instance, at the courthouse right now, we have 23 resources near us. You can click on those 23 resources. Say we wanted to go to the First United Methodist Church food pantry, which is .6 miles away. We can click on that, and if we wanted to, we could actually click on the directions, and those directions will populate here for individuals to know how to get to that resource. So pretty, pretty cool application. You can also, in the search here, type in a physical address. These addresses are limited to just Monroe County addresses. I've typed in just 3623 South, and you can see that just addresses in Bloomington are showing up. You can also search for locations that are part of this resource, so I'm just going to type in Shalom here, and we can see that this will bring us to the Shalom Center. Each of these resources have been categorized by their type. We also include their address, a contact number, and their hours of operation. And this is basically it. I do want to show one last thing here. I mentioned that there is a link here in the, in the app that allows for the public to actually contribute to this as a way to build a larger database. When you click on this link, it brings you to a survey that will allow people to essentially place a pin on the map of where a resource is, tell me what the name of that resource is and a description of it, what type of resource it might be, and then a website. That information essentially would be entered into a GIS instantly after I vet it. And so it limits my labor and also the labor of other departments. So with that, that's kind of the community resources map. It is available at tinyurl.com/MonroeCountyResourceMap. And that's it. So, thank you.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, this looks like a pretty wonderful resource. Thank you very much for putting it together. And also, I'd like to thank Cheryl Munson for having suggested it. It's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
They let me already suggest something last night to add where the libraries are, so.
Yep. No, it's a great, a great addition, so.
Yeah. So we look forward to getting this updated, and I really am excited too, because the new capabilities you're bringing to the county are amazing.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Is there any other department with an update for us tonight, today? Seeing none. Let's move on to public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. If you wish to speak here in the Nat U Hill Room, please come up and sign in, give us your name, and whether or not you are a Monroe County resident. And I can't see if there's anybody online. I do see that we have Mr. Shelton here. Please go ahead, Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, speaking again this morning on behalf of CASA, a court-appointed special advocates. Want to make the public aware that CASA's fall training is going to be here soon. It's going to run from September 19th to October 19th. They're trying a new format in terms of time to see if it makes it available to more people. So instead of being in the evenings, it's going to be in the mornings on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10:00 to 1:00. So from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays for basically a month. We need people to volunteer to serve as advocates for the children who are in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. And this is what the CASA does, where it's also essentially the eyes and, another set of eyes and ears for the court to help the court know what's going on with the children and what's going on with their parents. So if you need more information and you are interested, you can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, and it'll drop down a menu, and you can find a bunch of information about details about being a CASA. You can also fill out an application right online if you think you want to apply to be one. The applications will be due September the 8th, so just about a month. So please think about it. We've got some 20 children right now that we do not have a volunteer to assign to their case. Thank you for the opportunity to let people know.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton, for your dedication to this very worthwhile program. Is there anyone else who has public comment? Seeing none. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. This is from July 26, 2023.
Move approval of the minutes for July 26, 2023.
I'll second that. Any comments or corrections? I didn't see anything either. So with that, call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes from July 26, 2023 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Approval of, I move approval of the claims docket. Accounts payable August 9th, 2023, and payroll August 11th, 2023.
I'll second that, and we have Ms. Smiller here. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for August 9th, 2023 totals $2,017,439.6. The payroll docket for August 11th, 2023 includes $1,425,952.40 in direct costs, and the remaining $570,233.46 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $1,996,185.86.
Any comments or questions? It was a long list to read through today.
Yes.
Yes. So is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Call for a vote on approval of the claims docket. Accounts payable August 9th, 2023, and payroll August 11th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. I'll note for the record that there are no reports included in today's packet. So let's move on to new business. First item, please.
Move approval of City Glass of Bloomington, Inc. service agreement. Fund name, election. Fund number 1215, in the amount of $12,500.
And we have, oh, second, sorry. And we have Mr. Kreider here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet Manager. The narrow trim of the current entry and exit aluminum doors installed at election operations are unable to accept exit devices that span the appropriate width of the doors to meet current occupancy requirements. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by City Glass of Bloomington, Inc. in the amount of $12,500 to furnish and install two wide-trim aluminum doors on the existing frames with new hinges, electric hardware, thresholds, and sweeps. The new electric devices are the appropriate width, more user-friendly, and will connect to the software that schedules locking and unlocking times at the facility. Project funding is pending approval of an additional appropriation in the election fund 1215.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, all right. Is this like exit device? Is that one of the handicapped?
Yeah. Well, yes. Yeah, they, think of the courthouse doors, how the bar spans. It'll be just like that.
Okay. Thank you.
I drove past the building and see the need for this, so thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Call for a vote on approval of the City Glass of Bloomington, Inc. service agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Security Pro 24/7 Maintenance of Traffic. Quote. Fund name 2021 Geo Bond. Fund number 4814, in an amount not to exceed $1,200.
I'll second that. Again, we have Mr. Kreider.
A crane will be required to remove the solar array at the Charlotte Zetlow Justice Center. Partial street and sidewalk closures will be necessary on multiple dates. This request is to approve the quote submitted by Security Pro 24/7 and the minimum amount of $850, but not to exceed $1,200, to provide the mandatory traffic equipment and placement of equipment for the duration of the project. This service will also assist with permit planning.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't. I'm aware of the need to get this done as quickly as possible.
And this is the second time this year that we've had, we've needed this service, so yes, it works pretty smoothly when they're there to help, I know that. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Call for a vote on Security Pro 24/7 Maintenance of Traffic. Quote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kreider.
Thank you.
Next item.
Move approval of ratification of COVID-19 supplemental immunization funding. Fund name Long-Term COVID. Fund number 8181, in a grant amount of $175,252.27.
Second, and we have Ms. Kelly back with us.
Yes, so this is COVID supplemental funding that helps to support our immunization efforts through the Public Health Clinic. So last year, this funding was combined with our Vaccines for Children program. This year, they have split this funding into two separate awards. We do not expect this supplemental funding to continue after this award, but this is basically just going to help support our personnel in the Public Health Clinic, vaccination outreach, and to work with our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator on events to, in preparation for an outbreak.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
So in the past, people could get free vaccines for COVID. Will this grant help to pay for the actual vaccines as well?
This will help to cover that, and the Indiana Department of Health is actually looking at creating a bridge program. I didn't share the specifics of that information with you today because I don't have that information yet, but that is going to be something that they are looking at that will provide those vaccines for adults and all individuals in need at no cost. But again, I don't have the specifics of that right now.
But it's a possibility, so that's great.
Yes, they're working on it.
Fabulous. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Call for a vote on ratification of COVID-19 supplemental immunization funding. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of grant funding support for local schools. Fund number 8111. Grant amount $12,280. Should I read each of the?
This is broken down into separate items, so we're going to go ahead and mention these separate items.
Bloomington Montessori School, the Board of Health recommends funding $4,000 for water bottle filling stations. Covenant Christian School, the Board of Health does not recommend funding the HVAC unit proposal. Harmony School, the Board does not recommend funding the playground equipment. They suggest the Board of Commissioners could consider funding the request for internal communication equipment. Edgewood Schools, the Board of Health does not recommend funding carpet extractors. Seven Oaks Classical Schools, the Board of Health recommends funding $4,000 for water bottle fillers. The Commissioners could consider funding disinfecting fogger and HEPA purifiers. St. Charles, the Board of Health recommends funding two AEDs for a total amount of $3,850, and two bleeding kits for a total of $430. They recommend the Board of Commissioners could consider funding trauma bags and go kit. The Project School, the Board of Health does not recommend funding the creative play space. Monroe County Community School Corporation, the Board of Health does not recommend funding a nurse educator or consultant fees.
I'll second this, and I'd like to ask Ms. Kelly to explain to the public what exactly the goal of the grant funding is, because this comes from the state.
Yes, so the purpose of this grant agreement is focused on relationship building with the school liaison within the Health Department, with all of the schools within Monroe County. In addition, the focus of this grant is for our school liaison to work with the schools on updating their communicable disease plans, ensuring that children have access to vaccines and that their vaccinations are up to date, helping to coordinate vision, vision, hearing, and dental screening clinics as well, and really just acting as a support system, helping to provide CPR training, stop-the-bleed training, those types of wellness programs.
And I know from watching a recent Board of Health meeting that the Board of Health said that all the schools might want to apply for, if they don't already have them, AEDs and bleed kits. And so have, has there been anything to reach back out to the schools on that item? And if, if they want these additional items, can they apply for those under this grant?
Yes, I think that they could apply for, for funding to support that. Alternatively, I had suggested that we could purchase those items for the schools in need to be able to supply them with those devices. I'm not sure which method is the correct or best method to use for that, but that was just one avenue that I thought might be a little bit easier, just to find out which schools needed those supplies, and then for us to be able to distribute them.
I think it would be good to do some kind of census on what the schools need. I'd also, since this is taxpayer dollars, I'd also like to make sure that the schools are compliant with all federal and state laws, including Americans with Disabilities Act. And I think one or two of our local private schools don't have statements, at least on their website, that indicates that they're in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. So I would urge them to, to update their own policies on those things. Is there anyone, any member of the public who has a comment on this item?
I have a question.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm curious about what the reasoning was behind not funding playground equipment or play areas, which I think of as being health-oriented.
Well, I certainly don't want to speak for our, for the Board of Health, but I can give you my perspective on that. And I think that there was concern, that there did not want there to be a misconception of that being considered infrastructure, is that emergency preparedness related, such as post-COVID-related relief efforts? It's really a subjective matter. It can be viewed multiple ways, but I think they really wanted to make sure that they were focused on the specific terms, that we were in the direction that I was given by the Indiana Department of Health.
Yeah, when you describe the duties of the liaison, it sounds like it could cover that kind of thing.
Yes, so the direction of this grant has evolved and changed. I was not here when the original grant began. From my understanding, this original grant was really thought to just be a one-time, one-year grant, just to be able to provide a person into the schools to help support the schools through COVID. And then I think the state started to realize the success and the partnership and the relationship building that started to occur. And so then they started changing the outlines, the guidelines of the grant to look at a long-term program that this could help support with the schools. So it's just changed and evolved over time. Now it is more focused on long-term school support about health and wellness. So again, the current grant that we're in now, the guidelines within the grant are completely different than what it was originally when this grant started. So I think maybe there might be a little bit of a misconception just because of the changes that have evolved over time and what the goal of this funding is to be used for.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to ask if you could bring us back information on the cost of the disinfecting foggers and HEPA purifiers, and if those are things that also that other schools might benefit from, because this directly addresses prevention, the spread of disease, I think. So, and that was my understanding, that that was part of the intention of this also, that we reduce the chance of another pandemic, although fractionally locally. So, okay, at this point, I don't, is there any public comment? I had asked for that earlier, but I don't see any. So at this point, I call for a vote on the grant funding support for local schools in the amount recommended by the Board of Health, and $12,280. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of IU Health Community Health School Liaison Services. Fund name Crisis Coag Supplemental Workforce. Fund number 8111, in the amount of $65,000.
Second, again, Ms. Kelly.
I'm sorry, I should have said that's a grant amount.
Oh, yes. So we are, we are proposing to contract our school liaison services with IU Health Community Health. We believe that this will help allow a closer partnership with our Public Health Nursing Division, to be able to work more directly with the nurses when they go into the schools to provide vaccination clinics. In addition, the school liaison will still be responsible for adhering to all of the terms within this grant. The contracted individual will only be able to have the duties of school liaison and will be still supporting the schools with ensuring updated communicable disease plans. But again, now transitioning into this new grant cycle with a stronger focus on long-term health and wellness initiatives, such as healthy eating, exercise, adding that into some of the education that they are going to be helping to provide and support the schools with.
Comments or questions?
Well, when you mention exercise, I can't help but think about all the playground equipment that's been denied.
I, I am.
I know you don't make those decisions. Thank you.
I do have one question about this, and I'm sorry I didn't email you earlier to ask this. Who will provide oversight for this person?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Who will provide oversight for this contracted person?
So Amy Meek is the director of our Public Health Nursing Division, so that person, in addition to myself, this person will be directly reporting the activities that are being completed directly to me. This will require monthly reporting as well as quarterly reporting. In addition, the program is going to be established by the Health Department, so the program that the school liaison will be performing will still be a program that has been developed by the Monroe County Health Department.
And how quickly will this person be out in the schools?
Well, I think that that, again, is a stipulation. Well, I think that that, again, is a stipulation that we will outline within the program about those requirements. Most definitely, at the minimum, as required by the grant, but we really want to encourage regular routine interaction every time that the nurses are going to the schools, but then also on their own, helping to support the school nurses, for example, and making sure that, again, are there, is there employees that need access to CPR training, for example, and helping to coordinate services as well for the employees.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the IU Health Community Health School Liaison Services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Indiana Department of Health XFR Lead Paint Analyzer Agreement. Fund name Lead Case Management. Fund number 8115, in an amount that is not applicable.
Second, again, Ms. Kelly.
Yes, so the Health Department does have a grant agreement. This is for Healthy Homes Initiative, to help focus on reducing the risk of lead poisoning in children. Part of that grant agreement allows the opportunity for Health Departments who wished to use this XRF machine for lead risk assessments within homes. We have opted to use this. Currently, we are using wipe samples to collect and send off for testing. This will allow a quicker sampling readout time when we are actually onsite doing those inspections.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones.
Sounds very valuable.
Is this a lender program that the state has? That they lend the machine, or?
Yes, so, it's interesting.
Thank you.
They purchased a few, I think, I was told, because they were able to get them at a reduced cost. So the agreement was to be able to lend these out to Health Departments. They could use them for five years. At the end of the five years, then they could return the devices or decide to purchase the devices at that time. Part of the stipulation was that they did want Health Departments to share the device with other counties, and there was not a high response of interest in, in using these necessarily. But our employees were, have been very excited about this equipment since day one, and they are very eager about using it in the homes. And currently, at this time, we don't have any nearby counties that are interested in using this device along with us, but we do have interest within Monroe County that, for us to use it.
Excellent, thank you. We all, anybody who's had children or studied child development knows that babies learn by mouthing things, and so, the faster you can get feedback on these kinds of things is very important. So I appreciate the effort on this. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Indiana Department of Health XRF Lead Paint Analyzer Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. And before you leave, Ms. Kelly, if there's interest from Commissioner Jones on some of the playground equipment and other items, perhaps you could have a discussion on, the two of you, on what that would entail, and bring it back to us.
Yeah, that sounds great. We have a Board of Health meeting scheduled next week as well, so we can, I'm certainly happy to bring the topic back up for discussion at that meeting as well.
Well, and the defoggers and, and others as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For being here today.
All right, thanks.
Next item.
Move approval of the mitigation property name.
Second, and we have Ms. Whitmer, someplace maybe? Or Mr. Robertson? Who's here from Health Department? I'm sorry, from the Parks Department. Trying to get down to that. So Molly Turner King was the lawyer whoever saw this.
Oh.
Okay, then I make a motion to continue this item.
Till next week.
Till next week?
Ms. Whitmer is not well, and so she asked that this be tabled.
Thank you. So do I have a second to table it?
Second.
Any discussion on tabling this item? All those in favor of tabling the item from the mitigation property name signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. So it's tabled until August the 16th. Okay, thank you. Next item.
Move approval of Computer Systems, Inc. Services and Support Agreement Renewal. Fund name Identification Security Protection. Fund number 1160, in the amount of $9,490, for four years?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, and we have our recorder, Ms. Swain. Good morning.
Yes, this is a four-year renewal of an existing agreement with Computer Systems, Inc., or CSI, for redaction services and support. The software is secure and it redacts texts that contain social security numbers, which we are required to do by law, and we are asking that this is funded out of the 1160 fund that is funded by fees that are generated in the recorder's office.
So this is not additional money out of the taxpayer coffers.
No.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
I don't have any either. The contract was pretty straightforward. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will say thank you for making sure that these kinds of things are taken care of, and a call for a vote on the Computer Systems, Inc. Services and Support Agreement Renewal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Thank you for being with us this morning. Next item.
Move approval of Soter RS Body Scanner Extended Warranty Renewal. Fund name Misdemeanor. Fund number 1175, in an amount of $8,750.
Second, and we have Mr. Demmings.
Good morning.
Although that's not your correct title, I'm sorry. Morning, Matt.
Good morning. I'm Matt Demmings from the Monroe County Correctional Center. I'm the Assistant Jail Commander. This, this is $8,750 for an extended warranty that will cover the warranty parts for the Soter RS Body Scanner in the correctional facility through the end of June of next year. I spoke, or I communicated with the President of the company, and I asked him what the significant warranty parts were in the unit and how much they cost. And he told me that the x-ray generator in the unit costs $17,500. The detector costs $27,000. The platform is $11,500, and the PC is $5,050. I also asked him what the upgrade was cost on it. So if we upgraded the entire unit, it would cost $76,250, and a brand-new unit would cost $147,500.
What did you say, Ms. Purdy?
I said, oh, so $8,000 is not that much.
In comparison, yes, yes. Comments or questions?
I agree with Ms. Purdy.
I, I found the, the picture on the front of their, their proposal rather interesting, but yes, the, the fact that we cannot have these kinds of things coming into our facility is important. It's part of the scanning that goes on. I don't have questions, but is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Soter RS Body Scanner Extended Warranty Renewal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Assistant Jail Commander Demmings.
Thank you, thank you.
See you soon. Next item.
Move approval of Resolution 2023-22, Accepting State Public Health Funding.
Second, and we have Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, as, as I'm sure you're well aware, the state approved Senate Bill Four, which, is this picking me up? Which basically allows for state, or counties to opt in to get a significant amount of state funding to help with the Health Department and their programming. There's a list of required things that you have to do under these. I'm sure I am an amateur, but when I went through the list, I, I would think that we already do most, if not all, of that at some level. So this is, but in order to get the funding, it requires the county commissioners to opt into that funding by the end of August. And so this is on your agenda, so that we can accomplish that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I would hate to have passed this up.
And I, anything that you wish to add to this, Ms. Kelly? Because I know I sat through a meeting where you went through item by item, what we were already doing, what we already, what we need to expand, and the other things that need to be added. So you've been very thorough about reviewing these things.
Yes, and I will say I did not come prepared to speak on this exactly today, but I can just give a brief overview. So we are currently providing a lot of the services, but we definitely do have areas of weakness, and we definitely have programs that we are not currently doing that we need to completely build. So I think that we are ahead of the game, essentially, in comparison to many other counties. In addition, we do have a very large department, but we are going to need to expand that department to be able to carry out these additional services and really put a strong focus on building and strengthening the, the programs that we do currently have. I am working with the Indiana Department of Health, with each of the different divisions on getting metrics, setting those KPIs that we are going to be setting for ourselves to meet, and working on how we can create the, the programs that are going to produce the best results with this funding, because we certainly want to make sure that we are using this money and we are producing positive results within the community.
And for my review of the, the original items, it looked like you would be adding several staff members as well to accomplish these, these goals.
Yes, so that's definitely really going to be necessary. In order for us to really be able to put in the effort that we need to appropriately use these funds, we need to make sure that we have the employees who are dedicated to running these programs. In addition, we need to make sure that we have employees dedicating to obtaining this data to make sure that we are hitting our KPIs and that we are seeing success within these programs.
Thank you. Is there, thank you for, for sharing that with us. Is there any public comment on this item? I know I've received emails urging the county to make sure that we get signed up for this, so. Seeing no other input, I call for a vote on Resolution 2023-22, Accepting State Public Health Funding. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of adding Brenmar subdivision to the road inventory.
Second, and we have Ms. Ridge here.
Good morning. So the developer, Crossroads Development, of Brenmar subdivision, has completed the project, and then they request for us to take it over for snow removal and future maintenance. It'll be sent to NDOT for their approval. The roads are South Bluebird Spur, East Brenmar Drive, and South Justin Court.
Any questions or comments?
Were all of these roads built to county specifications?
Good. So that means that they have to have a certain thickness, there has to be certain drainage, there has to be certain slopes, shoulders.
Yeah, we had, it's been, it's been built for a while, we just had some outstanding issues to repair some mailboxes and things like that, and some drainage work. So we actually hired an outside contractor with the bond that we had on file to complete it, so we could get it into our inventory for the residents.
Good. I know this is always a concern to, to the area residents, so I appreciate that. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Brenmar subdivision roads being added to the road inventory. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of NDOT Change Order Number Four for Sample Road Phase Two. Fund name Sample Road Phase Two. Fund number 8162, in the amount of $32,932.
Second, and again, we have Ms. Ridge.
So we are trying to wrap up these projects. I expect to maybe three more change orders to come through to complete the project. This is actually, this one is to cover the cost to increase the line for the stabilization on the subgrade when the project was built.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
I don't either, I'm just glad we have someone with Ms. Ridge's qualifications and knowledge to oversee these things, so. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, call for a vote on NDOT Change Order Number Four, Sample Road Phase Two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Ordinance 2023-20, Starts Rezone.
Second, and we have Ms. Crisilius here with items popping up on our screen. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. One moment, my slides are right in the middle. Thank you. So, good morning. So this is the Starts Rezone. We've, you've seen this before in your work session, and we've attempted this before at a formal session. So this is Ordinance 2023-20. This is a petition to rezone a portion of a 17.29 acre parcel in Section 11 of Clear Creek Township. The property is addressed at 7955 South Fairfax Road and is owned by four individuals in the Starts and Fowler families. Our petitioner is Mrs. Lorraine Fowler. So this request is to rezone the portion, a portion of the site. So the property is currently zoned agricultural rural reserve, in addition to the environmental constraints overlay areas one, two, and three. So the agricultural rural reserve district is intended for agricultural uses in limited, very low-density rural, non-farm-related, single-family uses. They are requesting that a portion be rezoned to the limited business district. This district is identified as being primarily intended to meet the essential business needs and convenience of neighboring residents. So just a quick photo or two of the property to get you familiar with the site, so it's kind of long and narrow. It does meet all design standards for the zoning district, so it is more than 200 feet wide. The property contains, formerly, used to contain an old residential structure that has since been removed. So the farther west you are on the property that's accessible from South Fairfax is, contains what we would call buildable area, so that's slopes under 15%, and is in the ECO Area Three, which has slope restrictions of 18%. So there is adequate area for any kind of development, just generally under the zoning ordinance when it comes to slopes. The farther you travel to the east, there will be steep slopes as you approach Lake Monroe on the far east side, that are protected under Chapter 825 of the Monroe Lake watershed. So I'm just flipping through a few photos here. This is standing on the site, looking north at South Fairfax Road. So you can see that this is that, that front area that's sloped under 15%, and that's looking south on South Fairfax. So here we can see that slope gradient as you move east towards Lake Monroe, where it becomes steeper. it becomes steeper. Those areas would be protected under any kind of development unless a variance or some kind of other special exception was sought. So, the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as remaining a rural residential zoning district. So, this is going to be very similar to the agricultural rural reserve uses now, which is kind of more low-density agricultural uses. So, the petitioner is a local Monroe County real estate agent and also family and part owner of the property. They are seeking to rezone the property. As a Realtor, they, she has noticed in multiple interests and, and clients that are looking to build commercial boat storage. So, this here on Fairfax Road is approximate to the lake. So, she's identified this as a need and is their desire to, to rezone a portion of this property to LB, which would be a zoning district that does allow for boat storage. On the left side is, is Mrs. Lorraine Fowler's lettered, and on the right is an interested buyer in the property listed as Mr. Dave Utley. We have received some remonstrance from an adjacent property owner. You've been, you've seen this by email, and it was formally, just recently included in the last packet as well. As we think about the use zoning districts, there are, in your attachments and the exhibits, there, there is an exhibit that lists all the uses that are permitted, conditional or not permitted, in the current zoning district, and there's also a list for showing the same uses for the limited business district. So, the planning commission heard this on May 16th of this year. They decided to forward a negative recommendation by a vote of five to two. You've heard this on June 21st and recommended that the petitioner create a written commitment and to complete the right-of-way activity permit. Now, I concluded in your information is the written commitment. It's, should be the, the last attachment after the report and the exhibits. We do not necessarily have a right-of-way activity permit. All of the petitioner has worked with the Highway Department. The intent of that right-of-way activity permit was to approve a commercial drive entrance. Well, to technically complete that process, the petitioner would have to put down a construction bond with the Highway Department. So, I believe they've identified that there is an approved location that could get a permit, but at, to date, no permit has been truly finalized and issued. So, looking at the written commitment that was requested by the commissioners, just going to go through it here a little bit. So, Mr. Michael Carmen created this document. They state here in, in Section One that all uses identified, permitted or conditional uses in accordance with Table Two, applicable to the LB zone, shall be restricted to boat storage. So, this written commitment is proposing to, to allow for the rezone to proceed with, to only allow boat storage. It then goes on to list that the boat storage shall comply with Condition 41, which is the conditions A through D that are required for boat storage under Chapter 802 already. A few more. So, existing permitted driveway in the property shall be closed, and a commercial driveway permit obtained in accordance with the rules and requirements of the Monroe County Highway Department, that cars features on the lot will be located marked, and conservation easements or other protective measures will be installed in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Then, a big one here, which is the zoning petition pertains to only a part of the legal lot of record. The record lot will be subdivided in accordance with the rules and conditions of the Monroe County Subdivision Control Ordinance, creating two lots. One lot, which will match the description of the amended zoning petition, and the remainder, which will be separate, a separate parcel retaining the current zoning AgARRR. So, when we've heard this petition in the past, the petitioner has floated the idea of subdividing. Planning staff has, has worked with them, and they understand that, you know, under this rezone, subdividing after it's owned, limited business would not allow for residential uses. So, under this written commitment, they have decided to propose that instead of rezoning all of the 17 acres, that only a portion of the rezone would apply, I'm sorry, that the rezone would only apply to a portion of the lot, and that it would only become effective once they pursued, pursued a subdivision. So, the subdivision of the record lot shall create the standalone legal lot consistent with the described parcel. So, it would not, the rezone, I mean, understanding is that the rezone would not be effective until they followed the subdivision control ordinance and subdivided the property. And once subdivided and recorded, this is, would be what the zoning would look like. So, they are saying that they would have to comply with all of the subdivision control ordinance, and if they do, then the area 5.77 acres shown towards the west of the property would be rezoned to LB, and the remaining acreage of 11.52 would remain agricultural rural reserve. So, planning staff recommend, is recommending denial of the rezone requests from AgARRR to limited business based on the findings of fact and subject to the Monroe County Highway and Drainage Engineer reports. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Jones?
No, not at this time.
I have one question, and then we'll move on to the next part of this. If this were to be divided, how would access be, what, how would they create access to that second eastern plot?
Sure. So, the subdivision control ordinance would require that they approve legal access to that back portion. So, the most common way to do that would be that they would record an easement through the subdivision process. They would put it on the plat as the main access easement. So, they would have a, an access easement through the LB portion to South Fairfax Road.
And would, a zoning that allowed for boat storage, would that also allow for boat repair?
That's a good question. Let me consult that list of limited business uses. Okay, I have in front of me. So, boat storage is listed under the category of Business and Personal Services, and I do not specifically see a boat repair. If you'd like, I can go ahead and pull up the zoning ordinance and double-check the definition of boat storage to see if there's any language that includes repair.
We have the planning director here before us. Did you want to add something?
Hey, so boat repair is under Automotive and Transportation. It's not permitted in the LB zoning district. So, it would not be permitted. Yeah.
Thank you. That was very efficient. Okay, now, I need guidance from Mr. Cockrell on how to run this, because this is a hearing, correct?
Yes, you would give the petitioner the ability to make a presentation, and once they've concluded, you allow 15 minutes for those speaking in favor of this item, and then up to 15 minutes for those here to speak against this item, and then, and that's the procedure for the, for the hearing.
Okay, thank you. So, is the petitioner present, either in person or virtually, to speak on this? Please come forward. And make sure that you sign in at the podium, state your name, and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident, please.
Hello, my name is Lorraine Fowler. I'm the Realtor and part owner of this parcel. We have been on this journey for some time, so I thank you for even just your consideration of it. I think we've done all our due diligence, and met with a real estate attorney, and he drew up the written commitment that addresses any concerns from the public. So, I really feel like we're just at the decision point, at this, at this juncture. I have Dave Utley, who is the defined buyer here, if anyone has any questions of him.
But you're not the petitioner, is that correct, Mr. Utley?
No, I'm the person that's trying to buy the property and put the boat storage up.
I would consider this part of the petitioner's speaking time, and so it's not a, it's not on any kind of limitation.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Utley.
I, I just, I know you've heard me before. I don't have really a whole lot more to add to it. I've been in the boating business for 20 some odd years in, on Lake Monroe. The, the need for indoor concrete floor boat storage is humongous. I owe it to my customers to at least try to get it, to get it done, and this is the best shot I've seen. I, I've looked at properties for several years now, and this is the only one where I've come close to being able to build a boat storage facility. I think the last boat storage building that was actually built on our side of the lake for sure was in 1996 or 1998. So, all the, all the, all the facilities to take care of the boats that are on Lake Monroe are not in great shape, and the, the customers that are calling me are really wanting some high-end, secure, convenient places to store their boats. I don't, I don't know where to go from here. I've tried to do everything I could to, to get you to believe in me, if that's, but I will be okay with whatever you decide.
Thank you for.
You got any questions for me?
Well, I don't know whether this is for you or for Ms. Fowler, but one of the things that Ms. Crisilius said was that a rezone to limited business is to meet the needs of nearby residents, and so how does this meet the needs of nearby residents?
So, so obviously, the immediate neighbors wouldn't need indoor storage. There's, there's a condo complex called The Point down there. Lot of, lot of people, maybe not full-time residents, but part-time residents, need a place like this to, to store their boats. The, maybe 25% would come from Monroe County as a physical address, but a lot of them own property at The Point, and we would get a lot of business from Indianapolis who could bring their towing vehicle down, launch their boat, put their boat back up, and then maybe sort of see a restaurant on the way back home, or it would prevent the traffic from Indianapolis to have to haul their boat through our town, and it would allow them to stop for food on the way home, which I know it sounds silly, but I hear it a lot. I would just like a place to park my boat that was covered and secure, that I could stop and have something to eat on the way home. It's something I hear a lot of.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the petitioner group who wishes to speak? If not, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this rezone? So, either come forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Please state your name, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Brad Bloom. I'm, I own the property just north of this location. Very beginning meeting, she stated the main reason for this rezone was to get more money out of the property. I've never seen that in the master plan for a reason for a property, for you all to consider, property be rezoned because the petition wants for money. Number two, this is sort of an endgame here. They talk about the neighbors. Well, the neighbors in this, I'm a neighbor. A lot of neighbors came out and talked against this. It was advanced twice with a negative recommendation. I have to assume, based upon what some of the neighbors said, based also upon the fact of what limited business, you know, is defined as, and it definitely does not meet the needs and the convenience of the neighboring residents. He even stated the neighboring residents are gonna, they've already got inside boat storage, and they're gonna keep their boats inside. The, it, it's sort of a thing where you got property rights. It's a game. People call property rights a game. Since 1987, I've given over $135,000 of property taxes to this county. These people, for this property, have given zero. None, absolutely none. So, where do you, I mean, for the property, they give them property taxes to the county, but not for this property. They're coming in new. The property was inherited. So, so where do you give the rights to? Do you give the rights with the neighbors? Because the neighbors, we're not wanting it. He states in his one letter that, he says here that the well-designed site would allow him to serve the needs of his customers and be a good neighbor. No one's approached any of us to discuss this, to try to work anything out, to say what's gonna go in there. Nothing. It's just like, here it is, this petition. That's not neighborly. And if you, and if you can't be neighborly to begin with, I don't know what's gonna happen. It's just, it's very inconsiderate. The, the thing that astounds me, I sent pictures in of, you know, of how the general business has now has been kept, as far as fences, six-foot fence, that won't keep the boat sites out. But yet, you're gonna put a business in a location that is so unsightly, that is so unsightly, that you have to say, hey, we're gonna put a fence up to keep you from seeing it, and we're gonna put trees up to keep you from seeing it. That's what we got. Because, but fences up, a six-foot fence will not cover the boats from the public view. How long will the tree is gonna take? It, it just not follows. It's, it's been negatively advanced twice. I don't see what additional information is here for that to be considered any other way. Like I said, you've got the property rights of, of the neighbors. The neighbors have talked out against it at the other two meetings, and I, I just, I just wish that, you know, that the property in our neighborhood, as we have, would just remain the same. It's perfect for rural agricultural. If you look at the, I mean, obviously, you've looked at it, you know, you know the thing. It's perfect, exactly what it is. One thing they talked about, the drainage, is that the water, they said there's just no cars features. There are cars features. I pointed that out. And there, and, and if the drains, drains come off these buildings, it will naturally drain down to a sink, which directs, which directly 200 yards down the road dumps directly into Lake Monroe. I mean, I, I pointed out, I've been there. They say there's no cars features, but you know, if you looked at some of the pictures that should have been presented, there are cars features there. The, you know, that's totally wrong. But as a neighbor, I'm against it. I know the neighbors have spoke out against it, and it does not fit the limited business needs of the neighborhood, does not advance the neighborhood at all, actually deter, deterrence from the neighborhood, deterrence from my property value, which I put in. You know, I spent a lot of money doing nursing that property to get basically back what the master plan calls for, what you want in that area. And for someone to come in later to change all that is, I don't, I don't see how you can vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this item? It looks like we have someone as a panelist. Does their hand raise? Is that you, Ms. Crisilius?
Oh, yes. I'm not meaning to speak against it. I just had a clarification when the time is right.
Please go ahead.
Okay. So, we discussed boat repair. In the written commitment, Mr. Schilling wanted to offer a correction, and the written commitment that the petitioner has offered, under Condition 41, it does include a note about number C, which would allow boat repair services and accompanying sales of repaired merchandise is allowed only as an accessory use. So, that is included in the written commitment.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Cockrell, would you please guide me on what's next in this process?
I think you should confirm that there's no one else here to speak in favor, because I think there's still 10 minutes left on that clock.
Is there anyone else here wishes to speak in favor, either in person or online? Is there anyone else here wishes to speak in favor, either in person or online?
Okay, and if not, then I think the, the hearing is essentially closed, and you can move on to determination.
Okay, then, the, seeing no one else who wishes to speak, we'll move on to the determination here. Any other comments, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I actually drove out to look at this property. And it's, it's in an ag RR area. And I, I don't see how this rezone would impact nearby residents. Yes, I understand that there may be less boat traffic or trail-pulled boat traffic along the road, but I don't see that as sufficient reason to grant this rezone. So do we have a roll-call vote on something like this, or just a voice, voice vote?
I think you could do a voice vote, and I'm more than happy to do a roll-call vote if that's what you prefer.
I don't care. Well, why don't, why don't we do a roll-call vote just on this? So, go ahead.
Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Motion is denied, two to zero.
Correct.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-one, Fieldstone or Wiley Farm, PUD outline amendment number four to parcels F, G, and I.
Second, and we have Ms. Bearman here with us today.
Morning, commissioners. Yeah, I'm here to present ordinance, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-one, part A, B, and C. This is, was originally considered petition number PUO dash twenty-two dash two, as it moved through the Plan Review Committee and the Plan Commission. It is the Fieldstone Wiley Farm PUD outline plan amendment four. It impacts thirty acre, thirty-point-two-three acres that you can see highlighted in blue here. I gave some perspective of the floodplain that's in the area, the airport that's to the west, and then you can see a lot of the residential development there. So this is Banbury Township, section two, and owned by Authentic Homes Incorporated. It's currently zoned PUD. So they're proposing to outline, or to do an outline plan amendment in three different capacities, and that's why we're seeing this in three different components. So part A deals with the road network and buffer yard and open space. Part B is residential density changes to lower the density. And then part C would be to potentially add a use or convenient storage to a specific portion of tract F, and that would be for three-point-three-four acres. So again, this is loc, this is in the Fieldstone PUD. Sometimes it's referred to as Wiley Farm PUD. The comprehensive plan has it as suburban residential. And you'll notice that the Makua Employment Comprehensive Plan is just adjacent here. Monroe County Animal-Human Society is, has developed in this area here. There's a few vacant parcels here that have not developed yet. And then just to point out that the portion of convenient storage was proposed to be up in this corner. These are the site conditions. There is a lot of slopes that are less than twelve percent. We are in a critical watershed for this, for the Cave Creek watershed. And then there are a series of carst features through this parcel here. You can also see that there are water lines in the area, and also sewer is adjacent. However, the petitioner has been unable to obtain a sewer connection letter from the City of Bloomington Utilities at this time for residential. And I will say that convenient storage can be developed without having to connect to sewer, so just putting that out there. Background of this PUD is, it was established in nineteen ninety-four under the City of Bloomington, ordinance ninety-four dash fifty. It's approximately twenty-seven pages long, and we've been administering it since nineteen ninety-seven. So we've seen this PUD develop over several phases over the years. And one thing that we've noticed when we geo-referenced the parcel onto the original outline plan maps that they had set forth was that this road had kind of shifted. And if we required this road to be built, it would be going right along the backyards of some of these areas here. So when the petitioner originally asked us to do this convenient storage additional, you know, use to add to the property, we were also encouraging them to maybe redesign the road at this point as well. And also because there were a lot of carst features in the area that you kind of saw a little bit ago. They did supply back in nineteen, or in twenty-twenty-one, a carst report. And it does show that there's a big seam of paley limestone that runs through this parcel. The hydrology report, you have a copy of that in the packet. It's twenty-four pages long. But it does identify several sinkholes throughout the site. And so this road network that you'll see in a moment was intended to do the least amount of impact, and yet still meet the spirit of, of that original ordinance that was passed by the City of Bloomington. So I've added a lot of color to what they originally submitted to us. But the traffic and circulation plan, this blue road is a phase one that they're kind of interested in doing. Should they be allowed to do this convenient storage use? The orange are the road networks that would be on-site, adding a cul-de-sac down here. We do, in planning, like to maintain connectivity. So there's a yellow off-site connection that is proposed in the outline plan. And should this parcel over here to the east ever develop, we would expect that road connection to be kind of put forth. And then also to the west here, this would connect to, I believe, Kirby, Kirby Road over here. So this traffic and circulation reconfiguration and phasing is, is kind of mentioned. We've put together the ordinance to make it so that staff can understand this in the future when we review through this ordinance. They are removing a portion of the buffer yard as a result of this shift. However, you'll see here that they're delineating all of the, in gray, this is fifteen percent slopes, which this county considers restricted from structures. And then they've also delineated all of the carst features here in these hatched areas. So in a sense, there's, though we're removing some open space, we are identifying a lot more open space that does have to be maintained, and some of that would be up here as well, you can see all that shaded area. So that would be, I'll just back up. This would be ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-one A. So that's the first ordinance that you would probably be taking a separate vote on. We're gonna move into the second ordinance, which is part B, and this deals with residential density. This is the table that we inherited from the original ordinance. And yes, these marked-out areas are from previous tax amendments. And what we're working with here is tract F, G, and I. So they would be wanting to kind of change some of the densities within this. Tract F is identified as this blue area here. And I'm just briefly pointing out, this is the area that they are proposing to add the use convenient storage. Tract G is this one with medium-density residential, and then the green down here is single-family residential. And we had, I think it was the player review committee that had asked originally the petitioner to kind of show the impact of how these different, how the different use would impact the density to the site, and to maybe prove that the density could go here. So they have outlined out just a proposed layout of how residential, residential could go within this area. And should this use not be approved, it would be infilled with the density that's been proposed. So when staff started to make sense of this and put it in the form of how we would amend the ordinance, we took that table that you originally saw, and we started to edit it. So tract F would, would end up being medium-density residential without the convenient storage. It's approximately thirteen acres, could have eighty-one units, rather than that original one-eighty-four. The density goes from ten units per acre to six-point-two-five units per acre. I'm gonna drop down and skip this part here for a moment. Tract G, which was that middle green one, I believe, it would be reducing from eight units per acre to four-point-two-three units per acre. And then tract I, the single-family detached, would reduce that from one-point-nine-nine units per acre to one-point-one-five. And then dropping back up to F, should you implement and adopt part C, which is adding the use convenient storage, then we would maintain the same density. It would just reduce the amount of number of units by about twenty units for residential. And currently, right now, we cannot allow residential subdivision to occur on this site. We don't have a sewer capacity letter, and they have not proposed yet to do their own separate, you know, type of packaging plan or own sewer. The other thing is that when we're looking at this ordinance, we're only amending the density to just this parcel. We will not be amending tract F, that is outside of the parcel, tract G over here, and then tract I. The density will not be changing in there, but we wanted to make that clear to any planner who had to pick this up in the future. So we are also amending the table to say that any areas outside of this specific parcel to maintain that original density. So it does reduce the number of maximum units, but it doesn't change that density that they could try to implement. And I did make a summary table here, just to kind of show, like, what is the current number of units and what is the proposed. Currently, if someone came in with a sewer letter, they could put a hu, two-hundred-and-eighty-two residential units on this, within this area. Without it, or if, if you adopt the residential change, sorry, they could do two-nineteen. If the use for convenient storage, it would be one-ninety-nine-point-five. And so this is the summary of the reduction of, of housing by adding this change to residential density if it's adopted and if the use is adopted through the convenient storage. So I hope that makes sense. It was a little bit of number crunching. We also had to add in some design standards for these new medium-density residential lots for parcel F and some setbacks. So that would also be included in part B of the ordinance, and we, and we did clean up a little bit of other language. So part C would be adding a new use to a portion of this petition parcel. So this three-point-three-four acre portion that I pointed out earlier would have that convenient storage definition added in. There were a few other restrictions that they, that they offered as a part of the feedback from Plan Review Committee, drainage board, and those types of things. And so that would be to, you know, limit maximum impervious surface of sixty-five percent, and then the residential single-family lots over forty percent impervious surface. And then also, it would very much be limited to that three-point-three-four acres. And then they would use, they would treat the water in such a way that, and use it in the critical watershed values when designing the fire retentions for the convenient storage. And then we also added setbacks again into the ordinance. So again, it's this three-point-three-four acre portion that they're proposing to do convenient storage on tract F. One of the planners did an assessment of some of the other nearby facilities. So this is our petition site near the airport. This is the Fieldstone PUD, where we have a lot of residential, and then these are some of the other ones. And I will say, we've got another one that is beginning to develop again down here. And then there was another one that was approved north of town and has begun operating, so those did not show up on this map. But those are recent ones that we've had approved. There are capacity letters for electric, Centerpoint Energy, water for City of Bloomington. They do not have that sewer capacity letter to develop as residential at this time. I will remind you that the comprehensive plan sees this as suburban residential. And then to the west is that more employment district designated by the comp plan and the ordinance itself. Ordinance does list out the different commercial uses in PUD for those two parcels. So the Drainage Board heard this on April fifth, twenty-twenty-three. It is a critical watershed, the Cave Creek watershed. And there are seven conditions of approval. When I wrote up the three separate ordinances, I went ahead and included all of these in each one of those so that they wouldn't be lost over time. I can read those in, for the record, maybe when we go more specifically over the ordinance. There was a neighborhood meeting that is a requirement when you do an outline plan amendment. On January eighteenth, they had one meeting. From what I hear, it maybe wasn't well advertised, and so there were complaints that maybe we missed, that there was one that was missed, an HOA that's adjacent. So another one was held May third, twenty-one-three. This has a list of the different people that attended, so there were two, two residents. One was an HOA president, and then another resident attended. I was gonna do a public comment summary, so we did, in total, have two letters of opposition. We had five in-person opposition on the March twenty-first Plan Commission meeting. We had four in-person opposition at the May sixteenth Plan Commission meeting. I do have a list of interested parties that... Things I did email them, emailed nine of them and called one of them. I left a voicemail. There had been a discussion during one of the Plan Commission meetings that there was a large petition that was being circulated by the Fieldstone members of the community. And staff has just not seen that come into our office. Maybe your office has seen it. I'd be interested to know if you, if you have, and when you discuss this, let me know. And then when this was supposed to be on the agenda on July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, you did hear from a member of the public who was in opposition to adding the convenient storage. She has again submitted an email correspondence to me today to make sure that her voice is heard. She wasn't able to attend today. That was Emily Cheek, and she is resident in the area. She is opposed to building the, building of the storage units on tract F of the Wiley Farm property. With the growing transient population in Bloomington that is now spreading into the county, these units currently safety issue. Storage units are known to be used for housing, drug trafficking, and places for drug abuse. This proposal is in an established residential area with two elementary schools within walking distance. Placing convenient storage on the Wiley Farm property is incompatible with the surrounding properties and inconsistent with the well-being of the neighborhood. For these reasons, I believe a vote of no is in order. So I just wanted to make sure, since that does not, this just came in this morning, and I was just reading that for you, your implication. So the Plan Commission voted on this on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and they did recommend a positive recommendation for the reconfiguration of the road, removal of the buffer yard, open space in the, in the PUD, in the PUD. And that had five conditions of approval with it. We have now since have six staff conditions included, I think, as a result of going through the process of writing up the ordinances you're requiring for us to be able to edit it. And then additionally, they voted separately on the housing density. They ended up with a no recommendation at that time. And they also gave no recommendation for the convenient storage use being added to the property. At the time, there was, the petitioner had really wanted to keep those two together so that if the convenient storage was added, they would kind of, as a consolation, get the reduced density. There was, at the time, they thought, they wanted both tied together. At this point, I believe we have talked to the petitioners, and they are okay with not keeping parts B and C tied together. So you could vote on those separately. So I was gonna just bring up the actual ordinances and review those with you before closing my presentation. So again, ordinance twenty-one A, this is the one, I'll make this larger. Too large. This is the one that changes the traffic and circulation, changes the road type from a secondary collector to a local road. It references Exhibit 3 within the staff report, which is the image of how that road would connect to different parcels. And then also changes a bit of language in the open space. Again, this one received a positive recommendation from planning staff and then commission. And then there were six conditions of approval. One, the petitioner proposed an alternative connection to Bedrock Road that avoids the sinkhole conservancy area. Two, the petitioner revised the proposed impervious surface cover to discount the road for the residential areas. Three, subject to Drainage Board comments. Four, petitioner to propose language regarding the timing and extent of the road network filled out in coordination with timing of the proposed future residential development. Five, the petitioner to amend the roadway design to require cul-de-sacs instead of stubs at the end of the streets. Six, the remainder for single-family residential would have a max 40% impervious surface. This would include the road network in the calculation. This is the one that staff added when we started going through the process. And then we also have the Drainage Board reviewed the petition and gave the following conditions of approval. Number seven is to require release rates based upon the critical release rate in accordance with Chapter 751. Eight, require monitoring during construction. Monitor water level to make sure of proper release rates. Nine, post-construction monitoring by a third party to ensure basins are functioning properly for the first year, especially after a heavy rainfall. Number 10, preliminary and final drainage plan to be reviewed and approved by the Drainage Board. Number 11, recommendation spillway issue to be reviewed by the engineer. Potentially need off-site improvements for downstream improvements. If it is determined that the off-site improvements are inadequate, it may be able to require fixes. And 12, in the stormwater ordinance already, but require as-built of all detention facilities that approve. The final drainage plan must be approved by the Drainage Board. All right, moving on to Part B. This was the housing density amendment that we discussed. And in this one, we reviewed these tables here with changing, basically lowering the density for each of the different tracts. It does mention, just in case the convenient storage is added and passed, then we have a note in there that if it is adopted under Part C, then that changes the number of units that would go in there. And then clarifying that outside of this petition parcel, that the density would not be changing, that there would still be that option for adjacent landowners to continue to develop their properties. And then some clarification in some of the ordinances here and some admission of the design standards. I'll read these first three conditions of approval by staff. One, the petitioner to designate common areas for all drainage easements when property is subdivided. Number two, petitioner to propose the following minimum design standards for each area, minimum lot width and minimum buildable area, which we actually did incorporate that already up here. And then petitioner to designate conservation easements around the sinkholes and non-buildable area to preserve wooded areas. And then these are the same Drainage Board conditions. I will not read those again. And then again, Part C, ordinance C, this is to add convenient storage to a portion of Parcel F. That would be limited to 3.34 acres, as shown on Exhibit 3 of the staff report. And would also require some of these additional impervious surface considerations and some general editing in the ordinance as well to clarify, and then adding design standards. For this one, really the only condition of approval that we had for adding the use was subject to Drainage Board comments and compliance with stormwater and drainage ordinance. And I went ahead and just listed those all out here as well. So I think that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions specifically on a part of this complicated outline plan amendment?
This is a very complicated situation. I would ask Mr. Cockrell, before we proceed with listening to petitioner and others, do we take this one part at a time? Like, do we do A, B, and C separately? Or do we listen to petitioner and those in favor and opposed to this ordinance? How do we run this one?
I suppose there are three different ordinances. So I think you could run them, each individual ordinance together. Or I think, I think if the petitioner or doesn't object, I think you could handle all three of those at one time. I think I would ask the petitioner because our rules are there for the petitioner and the people speaking in opposition to be able to present their case fairly. And if they don't have an objection to it, I think that they, then you could proceed that way.
Okay, is the petitioner okay with discussing all three of these together during the public comment and during the petitioners?
Yes, I mean, discussing them all three together and you're going to vote individually on each one, correct?
They would have to vote on each individual.
Yes, correct, okay. So sir, if you are the petitioner, please come up to the podium and to the microphone. I will indicate for the record that petitioner indicated he is fine with considering all three during the discussion phase. Please indicate your name and we'll proceed from there.
I'm Dave Jenner with Authentic Homes Inc.
Go ahead and talk to us about what, why you want this put into place.
Obviously, we build homes. So subdivision part of this, subdividing it out into lots is what we presumed to do originally. With the stumbling block at this time of not being able to get sewer, we formulated an idea on something that we could do and build that would generate income while we wait till we see what happens with sewer. And nobody has an answer on to when that is going to end at this point. So that was why we are asking for this 3.34 acres to be able to do the storage units on because it's something we could do to build and generate cash flow until we get the other, where we can get it approved and put in single-family homes is what we hope to put in here. So that's kind of, that's where we're at in a nutshell and kind of how we got to where we're at. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any, any plans to put in any kind of package plant to take care of the sewer issues? To be able to further develop the area?
I couldn't hear.
Sorry, the acoustics in this area in this room are not friendly. Do you have any plans to put in a package plant for a sewer to be able to develop?
We'll have to wait till sewer becomes available. I mean, it's going to become available before we obviously move forward. So I'm not for sure what you're asking as far as a package plan.
It's a package plant. It's a, that takes care of a sewer. That would not be the City of Bloomington utilities.
We looked into those ideas, but I think that it would be better for us to try to wait till we got sewer. I mean, it's just across the street, you know, from where we're at, before we did the single-family homes. The expenses of doing those types of things were pretty expensive, a lot of upfront cost. And I felt like there was going to be a lot of resistance on trying to do any kind of waste treatment plants there, you know, on site. I mean, there's obviously a lot of different things that are out there that we could do. But I felt like we was going to get a lot of resistance from the people that lived around there having something like that on site because that's what it would take. We looked at going to the other sewage company, but it really dumps into the existing municipality anyways. So you kind of end up on the same road. So that's where that led us to. So that was why this idea formulated wanting to do the storage units, was it was something that did not require sewer.
Understood, okay. None of us have a crystal ball on this, when the sewage hookup might occur. And we know that there's ongoing litigation that may take multiple years at this point. So that's kind of something we're all going to have to wait for. Do you have anything else you want to share with us? Or should we move on to those that are in favor and opposed to?
I have nothing else to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenner, showing up today. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? We have hands raised. And this is for people who wish to speak in favor of the petition at this point. They're raised on virtually.
You know how many, how many hands are raised?
There are two hands raised.
Okay, so I would just ask them to keep their comments to under seven and a half minutes so that they, they both have an equal chance to speak in that 15 minutes.
Thank you. So we have two hands raised to speak in favor of the petition. I would ask that each of you keep your comments to no more than seven and a half minutes to actually allow the other person to have their full say. So let's start with Mr. Butler. Would you please go ahead?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm the petitioner, so I'm not, I'm speaking in favor of it. But I rose my hand during the petitioner portion. I'm the civil engineer on the project and I was just helping Mr. Jenner throughout this process. And I just want to reiterate that the plan was to gain access to the public sewer system and not build a package plant. That's advantageous and we would wait until that is available. But the approving of the ordinance now would allow us to do that when that becomes available. Like you said, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know for certain. But we'd be waiting to do the single-family portion until we have access to that at some point. We think, we think it may be sooner rather than later, but of course, we don't know for certain. Other than that, I have studied the drainage and the layout of this entire property, something that's viable and allows us to utilize the property now and later in somewhat of a phasing fashion. So feel free to, if you have any more questions for me, I just want to let you know that I'm here. I'm just on Zoom rather than in person.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. So that was actually someone joining the, as part of the petitioner for this project. So we have Wolf Judy Admin also with a hand raised. If you're there to speak in favor of the petition, please proceed. Please begin.
Wolfgang von Bueckler, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Wolfgang von Bueckler, I live in Fieldstone subdivision, adjacent to the proposed development. And I actually spoke out against the development in the March or earlier meeting. But since the density has been lowered and the way it's coming along and considering the cost and working around that, I would tend to be in favor. We do need housing. I understand the lower density probably means higher price per individual home. But if that's what it takes, I think to get the project going, that would be great. I did have a few just questions. I know originally the development was nixed because they wanted access to Gifford Road and the Gifford property owners didn't give any permission to cross their land. And my understanding was that Kirby was off limits too because of all the traffic. So this was news to me that there's going to be an access to Kirby Road. And I wondered, because there is a hill there, whether it's actually been looked at to see the sidelines when you enter Kirby from that development. Would you have good sidelines to avoid getting, you know, creamed by someone driving too fast, which they tend to on Kirby? That was one question. Where is the Kirby access actually at? And the other thing I haven't heard anything about is would this development have sidewalks and street lighting? I know our Fieldstone development does, but the street lighting is private. So our HOA pays for the street lighting and keeps it in good repair. County helps with the sidewalk. But basically, I'd love to see a plan that includes sidewalks and street lighting and landscaping trees. I know Stone Chase, when they built theirs, they don't have street trees between the sidewalk and the road. I'd love to see street trees be included either between the sidewalk and the road where each person's yard, so that would be some shade. There are a lot of walkers, a lot of runners, a lot of families that would appreciate that. Finally, I guess everybody's guessing game with three new council members on the city and the new mayor coming on. Everybody has hope that the sewer question may be settled. And the last thing, you know, and I just found out this development on Park Square Road and West 48, it's huge, thirty-some acres north of Highland School. It's being developed and they got sewers apparently before the mayor decided to stop allowing the sewers to be connected. So there's a big development going in there. And I think to be fair, you know, if they allow that, we should allow this gentleman to also have sewers and create a good living environment for all of us. There's another question I had about the retention pond at the bottom there. Remember on some of those drawings that would take care of runoff from the storage site? I just wondered if, you know, that's been thought through well because some of these storage ponds, they stay full. Stone Croft did a real great job on their retention ponds. You never see any water in them. It drains down. But if you just dig a hole, that's not going to eliminate this stagnant water sitting there. And finally, would this subdevelopment have storm sewers? Not talking about sanitary, but storm sewers or would it be surface runoff? Those are some of my concerns, but overall, I like what I'm hearing from the planners and the...
Thank you. I didn't catch your full name at the beginning. Would you state that again, please, sir? Guess we've lost connection, sorry. So is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? So Mr. Cockrell, we, do we move on to a vote?
Yes, and I remember you've got three different ordinances and they should each be handled individually.
Yes. So do we need to actually make motions for them individually? Because we just made a motion for the overall reason?
Yes, I think you need to vote on each ordinance individually.
So do we need to make a motion?
Yes, you need a motion before you vote. So yes, you would need a motion for each one.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bierman, could you possibly put up again the synopsis of the three different? Ms. Bierman, could you possibly put up again the synopsis of the three different?
It was A, B, and C, yes.
Do you have a good enough memory?
It's the road, A is road reconfiguration, two is residential density, and three is the storage, there, sorry.
Move approval of Ordinance 2023-21A, road design and phasing and open space configuration.
I'll second that. So do we need to take any other comment at this point, Mr. Cockrell?
You've had your hearing, so I think you are free to determine your outcome.
Okay. Again, since this is extremely consequential, I'd like to ask for roll call vote, please.
And this is for A, Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2023-21B, reducing residential density and housing type.
Second. Again, you ready for roll call vote?
Commissioner Giffens.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
No.
Motion is denied, two to zero.
Next item.
Move approval of Ordinance 2023-21C, adding convenience storage use to 3.34 acres.
Second.
Commissioner Giffens.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
No.
Motion is denied, two to zero.
Thank you, everyone, and this was a lot of work on a part of many, many people. So I appreciate all that. We have one more item to take care of in our regular agenda.
Move approval of ratification of a letter of employee compensation recommendation.
Second, Ms. Purdy.
Okay, I'll start this, but then I'm going to hand it over to you guys. By statute, the Board of Commissioners are required to present a recommendation to the county council prior to August 20 regarding employee compensation. And it is my understanding that...
Penny.
Commissioner Giffens, I was just so sorry.
Somebody forgot the name tag.
It was just a, you could hear the wind whistling through there. Commissioner Giffens made a presentation last evening to the council with a letter and gave that to them. And I'm going to let her speak to that and then allow for the actual ratification of the letter.
Thank you. As Ms. Purdy said, we have to make this recommendation prior to August the 20th. We had reviewed the 144s at a previous meeting in July. And so, based just upon the cost of living adjustments that we've seen over the past year, the recommendation was to provide a wage increase for the cost of living at 8.5% for all county employees. This is a recommendation. They are not limited to this. In fact, I personally would like to see an even larger wage increase so that there is a true salary boost here for people. And I, as I said last evening, I would really like to be offering wages that would allow our county employees to live within Monroe County, and several of them cannot afford to do that. We currently are the most expensive place to live in the state, according to different metrics that Ms. Purdy has provided us with. And even though we can look at, say, a Midwest CPI, Consumer Price Index, it even says at the Consumer Price Index page that this is a broad measure across a large geographical area. It does not apply to individual localities. And so when we take into account our individual localities, that is, and the cost of living here, that is why I would personally like to see it higher than 8.5%. But our recommendation yesterday was for at least a wage increase of 8.5%. Is that sufficient?
I think that sounds great. That's what was presented, and so now you need to...
I would just like to add one. The statute says it has to be presented to the county council by August 20. And last night's meeting was the last council regular session prior to August 20. So that's kind of why we're doing the ratification and did the presentation that way.
And typically, we would have done it last week, but we did not have a meeting.
Yes, I very much agree that I would like to see salaries raised more than the 8.5%. When we only give a cost of living raise every year, it means that our employees are just treading water. They never really advance. And while the Consumer Price Index does, it covers lots of different things, it seems that many of the most necessary things that people spend money on are the things that are going up the most, increasing in price the most. So I would really like to see our employees, as Commissioner Giffens said, be able to afford to live in Monroe County and to live a decent life here.
And I'd like to point out, too, that we have some very, very dedicated employees. When, you know, earlier when I said something about the advice and supervision of Ms. Ridge, she has been with the county for 35 years, I think it is, or maybe more. And she's not the only one in that situation. We have a lot of very, very dedicated, skilled people that I want to make sure that we are able to retain. But I'm not in charge of that. So those were just my recommendations and my feelings about it. So do we take a vote now to ratify?
Yes.
Okay, I'll call for a vote on ratification of the letter of employment compensation recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. So I see that we have Ms. Nestor Jelen and Mr. Schilling still here. Is there something that we need to hear about, or is this for the work session?
No, this is for a previous petition. We just want to make sure we're clear on the vote on the Wiley Farm. Could we just readdress one of the ordinance numbers and make sure that the vote was, we have the vote correct?
Okay, please.
So this is for 2023-21B, which would be the reduction in the housing density. The recommendation, well, the ordinance would be to change the allowance for multifamily to single-family residential. So without voting yes, you would be keeping the multifamily residential at this side. So I wanted to make sure that that was still the vote.
Okay, yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So we do not have any appointments today. In terms of announcements, I believe that our health department does still have free COVID testing available, both at their office at 119 West 7th Street and at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are still accepting applications for certain boards and commissions, and we continue to hold regular office hours that you can connect with commissioners via the county calendar. That's at co.monroe.in.us. We are co-hosting blood drives. The next ones are Wednesday, August 23 from 1:00 to 7:00, and Thursday, August 24, also from 1:00 to 7:00 at IV Tech. Or if you've recently given, you can sign up to donate Thursday, September the 7, from 1:00 to 6:00, or Friday, September the 8, from 10:00 to 3:00. We are still continuing to have weather alerts at times, so I urge residents to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System. This will alert you to both weather and health-related emergencies. That's again at our website at co.monroe.in.us. And for those who are income eligible, if you have a need to help pay for rent or utilities, please contact your township trustee. We have made additional dollars available to them to help those who, especially those who were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We've created a process for people or entities who are interested in applying for American Rescue Plan Act funding, and that application process will soon be available at the county website. And then I also want to thank the city council for moving ahead with the interviews for the capital improvement board. We're still waiting to hear from Mayor Hamilton as to how he wishes to proceed on that issue. And finally, I will let folks know that there is a, the city council is having a work session at noon this Friday, and some of my colleagues will be attending that to hold public discussion with them. And so if you're interested, you can join virtually or in person in the McCloskey Room. And I don't have any other announcements, do you?
No, I don't.
It is 12:03. We do have an item on our work session, so how about if we come back at 12:15 for that work session item? And with that, our meeting is adjourned, and we will see you back here on August the 16th. Thank you.